If you would all please stand. And, you know, I should write down who says the pledge every time. Greg was so good about that, such a good example, and I don't follow. Rick, you're looking. One minute.
The United Nations, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And just to let everyone know, Rob Demmett will be joining us via Zoom or WebEx or something, Microsoft Teams, I'm not sure, but he's here on the phone. And I'm going to give this back to Crystal. All right. Looks like we're ready for a roll call.
Ron Bacon?
Here.
Rob Demmett? Ted Metzger?
Present.
Brad Overton?
Here.
Richard Green?
Present.
Greg Richmond?
Here.
Chris Westime?
Here.
All right, looks like everyone is present. And as I said, Rob is present. The phone is here. Okay. All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the PSLIT request. All right, so we've got some different options here for the PSLIT that we'll discuss. So each year, the fire territories are able to request that a portion of the county's public safety revenue can be requested to help supplement their departments. And we've got a copy of the code here for guidance, along with requests from the townships that has been submitted to us. And this public hearing is an opportunity to allow the entities to speak to their requests. And we've all have received copies of their different requests as well, so.
Okay, so the public hearing is for them to have the opportunity to speak, and then we would close the public hearing and then open the regular meeting, correct?
That's correct. And just to be clear, it's not just fire territories. It's a fire department, volunteer fire department, emergency medical service provider, township fire department, fire protection territory, and fire protection district. So any of those entities are available to, are eligible to apply for a portion of the public safety local income tax.
And I should have asked you before, I guess we need to make a motion to close this.
We're just going right into the public hearing on that, so we're good to go. So now we can hear from, and should hear from, each entity that has applied for the, for a portion.
All right, so whoever, I don't have anyone listed in order here on the sign-in sheet. So if you all want to just take turns coming to the lectern if you have something to say. And if you don't have anything to say, that's fine as well. But we're going to open it up for public discussion at this time. The only thing that I would add is that, you know, if the comments just are repetitive, there's, you know, we can take one, you know, take a comment. And if someone has something different to add, then obviously feel free to come up. But so I'll go ahead and I'll open the floor for discussion at this time. So if anyone from any of those entities would like to come up, now's your opportunity. And if you just state your name and the organization that you're representing.
I'll go first. I'm Chad Bennett. I'm Ohio Township trustee. Good evening. We've had some big changes in fire protection during the past year. In Ohio Township, we've gone from an all-volunteer department to a combination department. We've hired 17 full-time firefighters with a combined years of experience of over 360 years. Our chief's going to speak to that here just shortly, but I just wanted to kind of go over, you know, our process started with you all three years ago. We were here today asking for movement and for fire protection in our communities in Warrick County. The first two years, your council was able to fund fire protection at 10% of the public safety lit rate. Last year, that was reduced to 5% due to concerns that you had over the new jail bond payment. Today, the financial picture does look much better than it did last year. Public safety lit revenue will increase by $1.8 million in 2025 from the current amount to $15,504,130,000. The county also received supplemental lit distribution earlier this year for additional revenue that was collected of over $2 million that was for projections that came in over what the state had projected. So I know that the unknown jail bond payment now, you guys know, is for $4.1 million beginning in 2027. And I want to commend the council on being able to fund this jail through the PS Lit without having to raise property taxes. Our need for Ohio Township, our request for this year, was for $1,989,500,000. Our need and the needs of all fire departments in Warrick County is to take the PS Lit back to that original amount of 10% that it started out with several years ago. We realize this will not meet all of Ohio Township's funding requests totally, but we need your help to start moving forward again to properly fund fire protection in our county. At this time, I'm going to call on our chief, Scott Foreman, to come up. And he's got some information to share, and I'm going to hand out some information for you all to use while he's speaking.
And just to make one slight correction, it wasn't, I don't believe it was actually 10%, it was .10%. Is that correct?
Well, it was 10% of the overall lit is what. So in the overall lit fund, when the lit committee put together recommendations, it was originally for 15% was to go to fire, and you all made that at 10%. So the first year you funded fire, it was, the first year was $12 million, and you funded fire at 1.2 million.
All right, thank you. My name is Scott Foreman. I'm fire chief with the Ohio Township Fire Department. I'd like to just kind of pass, he's passing out this pamphlet. On page one of that pamphlet, I like to call it the "why." What are we? We're Ohio Township Fire Department. But this request is bigger than just Ohio Township Fire Department. You see up there in the top-left corner, the county of Warrick County. Everybody in Warrick County is going to benefit from this request that Ohio Township is making. 44.37 square miles is what Ohio Township makes up. Population 45,000. Warrick County has 63,000 as population on the 2020 census. The next picture you see over is the, a picture of a subdivision in our area. We have 16,000 households in our township, and that's growing every day. There's new subdivisions popping up, site reviews this coming Wednesday, and there's 14 items on the agenda, 13 are Ohio Township. So it's constantly growing. Of these households, one of the main concerns we have as a fire chief or as a fire department is it's lightweight construction. It's lightweight wood construction, and that's minimal time to make any type of rescue or for fire attack, just because of the rapid fire spread. And you can see how close they are in just the picture they have demonstrated on the pamphlet. Traffic is another issue. If you, if you're familiar with Ohio Township or have traveled in Ohio Township, especially in the morning or the evening, you know the traffic is, it almost comes to gridlock. That's a big concern to us because it slows response time, not only for our on-duty crews, the guys responding, the fire trucks, but it also slows the response for volunteers coming to the station. And it's not just the traffic, it's the increase of traffic lights that we have. You have to sit at the light for four or five minutes before you can go, before you can proceed through that intersection. And that slows our response time. The top corner you see is one of our assisted living facilities. We have 10 assisted living facilities in Ohio Township. That's a large number, okay? And that's a large number of people. With those type facilities, we see a huge increase of run load just because the makeup of the facility, the age of the tenants in the facility, but just the large number of people in those facilities. It's considered a high-risk facility for us because some of the people have mobility concerns. So when you talk about moving, it's not just one firefighter going in and assisting somebody. You're going to have to send two firefighters in to move. We're sending five people initially, and that's way under the staffing level that we need. Below that, you see a hospital. That's Deacon and Skayway Hospital, major hospital facility in our area. We have two other hospital campuses, Ascension and then the Encompass facility. We have eight large multifamily housing complexes in our area. Okay, another big concern, lots of people, it's a high-risk facility, lightweight construction, and it relates to us having to react quickly for any type of emergency at those locations. We have seven school campuses and nine large religious campuses, our institutions in our area. Why do I point those out? Lots of people in one spot, okay? Which poses concerns for anybody. One of the things I like to point out is 70% of the county's population, okay, resides in Ohio Township, which thus relates, 70% of the lit money that you receive comes from those constituents. Fastest-growing township in southern Indiana. That's another thing, you know, Warrick County is a fast-growing county. Ohio Township's one of the fastest-growing townships in southern Indiana. That's big, something big to point out. On page two, we talk about the results, okay? Right now, we have 17 full-time staff at Ohio Township. Okay, that relates to five personnel per shift. Okay, there's two admin, myself and Chief Baxter, where they're Monday through Friday. But five per shift, okay? They work 48-hour shifts, they're off for 96. But of those five, fully certified, they can do anything that's required of a firefighter, and they're all EMTs. You see in the top corner, we have a Lucas device. We've been able to deploy the Lucas device 20 times this year on patients in cardiac arrest, okay? The Lucas device is what they call the perfect CPR device. The other thing we bring to the table is we have rescue divers on each shift, confined space rescue technicians, trench rescue technicians, rope rescue technicians on every shift, staffed daily, okay, with that skill set. Is that a big deal? That's a big deal for the entire county, because we're one of the only departments, along with Boonville. Boonville and us, Ohio Township, we're really closely together on technical rescue. But our two departments are the ones that are going to respond to any emergency in the entire county as when it comes to technical rescue type response. We have 33 volunteers on the roster, okay? When do most volunteers work? They work during the day, right? As you can see in the number at the top, 63%, 63% of our runs happen between the hours of 7:00 and 6:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., okay, with our busiest hour, 11:00, okay? Again, when do most volunteers work? They work during the day. That relates to a lower number of volunteers to be able to help us when we need additional help during our peak run hours. Okay, that's on page two. Go to page three. You're going to see a pie graph. That's fire department emergency calls for the entire county of Warrick, okay? Total calls, and this is as of June 30th, 2,245 calls occurred in Warrick County for fire departments, okay? Ohio Township made 1,042 of those calls, okay? So 46%, nearly half of all the emergency calls in Warrick County were made by Ohio Township. There's eight other departments in Ohio Township and that, or in Warrick County. That's Newburgh, Chandler, Elberfeld, Linville, Boonville, Pigeon, Skelton Owen, and Yankee Town. On page three, page four, our annual calls, you'll see a bar graph there, okay? In 2019, that was right before COVID, you see what our run load was. We were at 843 calls, okay? COVID happened, modified run procedures were put in place just to protect the responders. And as you can see, in 2024, as of August 3rd, we're at 1,253 calls. That's 175% increase. National average is 3% to 5% increase every year that we'll see in emergency call responses, okay? Why is there a drastic increase? It's because our focus is for them. We like to refer to it as them, the stakeholders, the people that we're serving, okay? We're making all life-threatening emergencies. So if you're having chest pain, shortness of breath, a seizure, diabetic episode, those are all going to dictate for a fire response. We're going to first respond and usually arrive prior to the ambulance's arrival. That was the main reason for the one increase in calls. Another fact that we like to point out is, in our industry, we talk about overlapping calls. So I can tell you, just less than an hour ago, we were on four calls at the same time, okay? We were on four calls at the same time, a wreck, an unconscious teenager, assist with Boonville fire on a possible house fire, and another medical, or a lockout, I'm sorry. But four calls at the same time that we had to try to handle, okay? So 344 overlapping calls, or simultaneous calls, or calls happening at the same time, which relates to 27% of the time in our industry, is super high. It's something we definitely have to try to fix. On page five, we talk about response time, all right? So you look at that pie graph, 23% of the time, we're arriving in under four minutes, okay? Station one, our staff station, sits in one of our higher-populated areas, lot of run volume in that area. So 23% of the time, we're arriving under four minutes. 37% of the time, we're arriving in four to six minutes. 40% is over six, okay? And some of those 10, some of those 12, it's, it's a, some of our area is a pretty good distance to have to travel to. Has anybody on the council ever had to call 911 for an emergency? Mr. Bacon? How did it feel when you had to call? Did it take a while for the responders to get there?
20 minutes.
20 minutes, okay? Well, it seemed like probably 40 minutes to an hour for you probably, right? I can tell you, I personally have had that same effect. I'm a trained EMT, very comfortable with my skills, okay? Three years ago, Christmas, my mom collapsed, fell off the stool. I thought she was in cardiac arrest, okay? Again, I jumped down and started doing what I could do. My wife called 911. Within two minutes, I heard a cue siren, a siren coming down the street. Evansville Fire Department arrived within three minutes. Five guys walked in my house and said, "What do you need?" Okay, a trained guy, I needed help, okay? I needed help because it was, one, it was my mom, and two, you know, I just needed the extra hands. So I can tell you, time is very, very important. Seconds count when you're talking about life. We get one shot to get this right in most cases. And if we don't get it right on that time, we're in trouble, or the stakeholders are in trouble. The other thing I would like to point out is eight minutes of not breathing is going to relate to irreversible brain damage, okay? That, again, that's one of our main things that we are able to provide, is life-saving medical skills, okay? The other thing is fire rescue, okay? If your house is on fire, we're the only ones. The fire department is the only ones that are trained to go inside and get you out, okay? The fire rescue is a big point of, that we want to make on that. So again, every second counts. Go to page six, runs by response district in Ohio Township. So 752 calls occurred in the Station One area, so the Libbert Station area. That is our staff station. Of this, this was as of August 3rd, so 1,255 total calls. Station Two's area, which is the unstaffed station, is 503, okay? That, those calls were answered by Station One. The thing about that is there's three miles between those two stations in approximately six minutes of travel time due to traffic and intersections, all right? The main thing we want to focus on is NFPA 1710 sets the standard for the fire service on what, how we deploy our resources and how we respond to things. Not only that, but we have ISO, insurance service offices. That's how everybody gets their tax or their insurance bill. That's how they know, the insurance companies know how much to charge you for your homeowner's insurance. Okay, those say you have to have one engine within a mile and a half, or you have to be within a mile and a half of a fire engine or engine company, all right? So you can tell, the two stations being three miles apart, we've put our stations in the right spot. They're just not staffed, okay? So we have that three-minute, or three-mile gap in between. We like to talk about effective response force. For a regular house, we want to try to get 15 firefighters on the scene, okay? A medium hazard, which would be an apartment complex or a small commercial, would be 28 firefighters. I can tell you, we're falling short on that just because of staffing constraints. So if you go to page seven, page seven, same thing, response time matrix. I've highlighted the 40%, okay? And I like to say, what if this was your emergency? You're the one that's called 911. You're over that six-minute response time. Did it seem like forever at 20? It does, okay? It seems like forever at six. It seems like forever at three minutes, to be honest with you, okay? But if this was your emergency, is it a big deal? It is a big deal. And that's our goal, is to try to fix that. And that's why we're requesting the lit request that we've made. So if you go to page eight, page eight is the ask. This is what we're asking for. We ask for $1,989,500, okay? This is not going to just serve the people of Ohio Township. This is going to serve the entire county, okay? The emergency service needs in the entire county. It's going to provide funding for our current firefighters to continue that request that you helped us start several years ago to implement career firefighters. It's going to allow us to hire an inspector, okay? Community risk reduction is huge, okay? And even though an inspector is going to be mainly focused in the Ohio Township area, is it going to benefit everybody in the tri-state? It is, because that inspector's going to inspect public properties to ensure that they're safe for you when you visit them. We also want to hire six additional firefighters, okay? What's that going to do? That's going to allow us to staff our other station, okay? And if we staff that other station, those 503 calls now have an immediate response and not a six-minute travel time in between. If you go to page nine, we talk about the benefits, the benefits of that $1.9 million request, okay? Again, we talk about staffing at both stations, okay? It's going to shave valuable minutes off our response time to the people that need our services, which is going to relate to saving lives, okay? It gets us closer to that effective response for standards, and not just for us, for the whole county. Like I told you, we just assisted Boonville on a call in Boon Township, okay? They assist us. It's a great relationship that we have, having two career departments in the county like that and being able to rely on each other is huge. It's going to provide an immediate coverage for those people in Ohio Township or outside of Ohio Township, but also allow us to maintain coverage within Ohio Township by having both stations staffed. The ripple effect, it's endless. I can't even sit up here and tell you all the effects of the ripple effect that having this request fulfilled would do for the whole county. And most of that is having a dedicated and committed means of response. You call, you request, you're going to get it, okay? Because it's staffed, it's there, it's ready to respond. Our standard is the engine is rolling out the door within 60 to 80 seconds. That's our standard, that's our goal. If they don't make that, they have to explain why they're not making it, okay? So that's good for you, that's good for them, and not just the people of Ohio Township. Again, we have to look big picture. Staff technical rescue for the whole county, okay? Again, we will continue to grow our abilities and to respond to these technical rescue needs and throughout the entire county, okay? That is something that's very, very important to us, okay? Us and Boonville are providing these services to the entire county. And we are the only ones that have the training and the equipment to facilitate those type of rescues. Another thing we like to, we're implementing or discussion with implementing with our schools and our local law enforcement is what we call a rescue task force, okay? Rescue task force is the medical and evacuation point of an active shooter incident, like in a school or in an industry, okay? Our guys will be able to go in with law enforcement and help evacuate the injured and the injured victims out of the environment. So again, that is something else that requires a lot of training, a lot of coordination with our local law enforcement. But between the Boonville Fire Department and us, getting that training and working and it's, and spreading that out to the other departments, we'll be able to provide a huge resource that is missing right now in Warrick County. Does anybody have any questions?
What was your response time on the tornado that hit my district?
What was our response time? The first unit was on scene within under four minutes, okay? Again, that was a large-scale incident. Chief Bacon right back there, he was the incident commander for the incident. Again, you realize real quick that the incident was a lot bigger than what we were dispatched to then.
First dispatch was a vehicle fire with a tree on it, right?
Yeah, so a tree that hit a vehicle and was on fire, you know? So I mean, and they struggled to even get to that one because of the amount of damage in the area. So a great response by Ohio Township and by the entire community. I mean, we had Linville on scene with us, we had Boonville on scene with us, we had Evansville Fire Department on scene with us through mutual aid agreements, we had McCutcheonville covering our own area, so, and Newburgh Fire Department, Chandler. So we had all those departments there helping us, you know? And that's what it's supposed to be. I mean, we're there and back to turn them. EMA was fabulous. They brought the command post down and provided resource that we needed to help us facilitate the, you know, the search and rescue efforts that we did and the cleanup efforts after.
Yeah, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Couple of questions I had here, chief, I guess really clarification, because you did, you did address it. The population that you serve, it says on here, 45,000 now. That's not the county population, that's the population of.
Just Ohio Township.
What you cover, okay? And you say that's about 70% of the entire population of the county, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and the, I guess I had another, couple of other questions. My, I don't care who answers, but they're probably more, Chad, you mentioned, I want to clarify, there seemed to be a little discussion about, you were saying 10%. Originally, the council had approved the 10% funding, and I heard someone say .1%. Am I, did I misunderstand what was being said?
It was, it just depends on how you calculate it.
Okay, so, so you're, so, do you remember what the PS Lit committee recommended that we distribute to the fire departments?
So that study committee, when they made all those recommendations to you all, the fire portion that they had recommended was 15%. And that, again, was to be divided up between all of the eligible fire departments. You all were able to fund it at 10% at year one and year two. And then, like I said earlier, year three, you back that down because of concerns about being able to make that jail payment because it was an unknown figure.
Okay, the, so, the original recommendation was 15. You were getting 10, and then it got cut back last year to 5%.
Correct.
This year's, the math looks like if it was 1.9, it would be more than 10%.
It would, and that's why we said in our, in our request, we realize this isn't going to be able to be fully funded this year. We just need you to know where our end is in order to do everything that the chief just spoke about, because it is critical that we get that second station on staff. And so we can make a step forward to it this year, but as the years have shown from the beginning of this, every year, Warrick County's public safety lit rate is increasing by a large number because every time somebody moves in, their paycheck is going on to that public safety lit.
It's increasing.
What's that?
It's not the rate that's increasing.
No, I'm sorry, it's the number of people contributing to it. So the rate is the same, but the dollar amount generated from it is what's increasing. So that also gives you guys some breadth to know that, you know, as future needs come up that are being addressed to you all, you have additional funding coming down the line that can support that. I know, you know, even though you've got a number on a jail, you know, there's always the question of what if we have some unknown overage or something? You know, the fact that you're not having to make that full payment for two years gives you several million dollars of savings that you can use to, you know, keep that concern at bay. And then, you know, eventually, as that fund continues to generate more revenue, that's where we need to be for our next big step.
And so I guess now this question maybe goes to you, Cliff, I don't know. So is the council bound to that original 10%? Or can we go above that? Could we go, you know?
You can go above it or below it, either one.
Either one. Is there a maximum amount?
There is a maximum amount, but for the rate that we have.
There's no maximum.
The maximum amount is the amount that we bring in.
Correct.
Except for the .05%.
Because it sounds like even.
Depends your question, no. Every year, a new allocation must be set to each entity that's requesting it. And it can be, there is no binding from any prior year commitment.
Okay, so, and then what does it amount to? Like, let's just, I guess, because it's been talking, you know, you mentioned 10%. You said try to get it back to the 10%. What's that amount to in dollars compared to, say, maybe 8% or something like that?
Well, 10% is 1.5 million off of a $15 million lid. If you go to 8%, it would be 1.2 million, so.
$300,000 difference?
Between 2%, so I guess for every percent, it's $150,000, you know?
So you're actually, from the original request, you're, there's almost half a million dollar difference, right?
Crystal, is it 14 or 15?
What, is what?
The total.
Well, the estimate for 25 is 15.
It is 15, okay.
$15,504,130 is what was on the state budget agency that they published a couple of weeks ago.
And then, I, I notice the building commissioners here. Is it okay to ask a question, a member of the audience?
Sure.
Because there's been a lot of discussion about growth in the county, and so.
Dennis Swacar, Warrick County Building Commissioner.
Just say there's been a lot of talk about growth in the county. I guess you probably see where that's happening, is my hope, is my hope in asking you that. Like, say, building permits, where are you getting, where's the growth at?
It's in Ohio Township, as far as we're concerned. As for the commercial and the residential's, a lot of commercial in Ohio Township.
So would it be safe, would it be fair to say that a lot of these new tax dollars could be coming from new people coming in to Ohio Township?
Oh, yeah.
I think that's pretty much it, what I had, just really some clarifications there, thanks.
How many runs do you make outside of Ohio Township?
So this year alone, we have made 18 runs outside of Ohio Township. And that relates to like 1.6%. And I can tell you, of those 18, that'd be 19 now after just an hour ago. But of that, so 12 of them would be in Boon Township or Boonville, so, Boon Township, so. We border their area right there, we're fairly close to it.
Like Jago Holmes, you're closer to those than they are.
Exactly, so we do a response a lot with them in that area, so. I would like to say too, on your tornado question, it wasn't just EMA. I mean, the entire efforts of everybody in the county. I mean, the entire efforts of everybody in the county was really, it was neat to see. The Sheriff's Department came, you know, they were big participants in it, County Highway Department. I mean, so it was neat to see everybody come. Ascension ambulance was, you know, they were pushing hard during the whole incident, so it was a great effort by all the county emergency responders.
And the neighbors too.
And the neighbors, absolutely.
Got a question, the, on your presentation, the ask, the 1.989, 1.9 million.
Yes.
Is that they need to fully fund and get that station up and running? Is that going to be ongoing, continual every year? The ask that you're going to need to have two stations running?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We want to keep, yes, we want to continue the growth and the positive, in the forward direction. I mean, the area of Ohio Township, I mean, theoretically could, you know, hold at least four stations just in itself, if you do studies by what analytical studying of what fire service does. You know, it definitely needs more than what it has. So yeah, the goal is to continue to grow. We know it can't happen all at once.
If the county stops growing at that rate that we're doing, then we're going to have an issue also of meeting the needs that we are meeting, the ask that we've got presented to us, that we're sitting here with needing $2 million, and we're not getting enough in anymore with that. And I'm looking at the future possibilities.
We haven't lost it, we just haven't made that benchmark yet.
Yeah, I know.
We just know, so yeah, but
But I'm saying if we do this, you know, as we go along here, looking at putting in, and suddenly, we're not bringing in that amount of money from there. We still have people to pay, our departments are in and so forth, and we're not possibly not bringing in enough money to do that. Then we're looking at raising the PSLI fund to the constituents.
If we got to that point, but I think, you know, based on what we see, the trending, that's not going to happen anytime soon. We're not going to spend that money till we know that it's available. And to answer that point, this is, yes, an annual request. You know, when we started out, we said when we do this, we will need to keep this funding in place. And so that's why, you know, when we took that big hit last year, we dipped into our savings to make that number happen. We need to continue to be on a positive level so that we had, we had some cushion to be able to weather a bump in the road. But we hope that those road is smooth now moving forward because you guys are, have a clear picture on where you stand with it. But this would be no different than what you're doing to fund police, EMS, EMA, the different things out of that.
That's the point I'm making, yeah.
So, and we feel we're just as important role, like Scott said, everything that happens in tornado, we are all an integral part of that public safety piece of pie. And again, we're speaking a lot about Ohio Township, but this request, you know, because I don't see anybody else here, but you know, we're making this for all the eligible fire departments because they're all going to get a percentage of this based upon it. This is not just exclusively an Ohio Township number. So like when we were talking earlier, the 1.5 million is not going to just Ohio Township, it's getting divided out amongst all the others.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't there a point in time where we could allocate funds disproportionately between districts?
It has to be based on assessed value.
Correct, but I mean, wasn't that, at least there was a point in time where we could do that?
The first year, yes.
So what happened to that, was there some kind of?
A new Indiana code was passed that said that we can no longer do that.
Because I know some of these areas are probably in more, definitely in dire straits, so I just wondered how that came about, that, because, you know, some of these areas obviously could, you know, definitely use, I mean, pigeon skelton, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to drop them, you know, 50, $75,000, but I guess that was changed due to some, there was a legislation passed?
Yeah, that's, legislation passed that, to change it.
Who was, was that driven by?
Probably, I would say it was probably driven because of, some people thought it was inadequate, what they were doing. Having the ability to give that money to who they wanted to instead of giving it out based on assessed value and some type of formula to make it easily. Let's say, okay, I'll give you an example that doesn't fit. There's one example in this county that doesn't fit the statute at all. We have Campbell Township. They pay into the lit, there's growth there. It's probably the second biggest area, fastest growing area in Ward County. And, I mean, Ohio's much, much bigger, so you can't count the numbers, but as far as the percentage of growing, it's growing very fast. They pay into the PSLI and get nothing from it because there's no incorporated city or town in there, and they don't meet any of the qualifications to get any money. So they don't have a fire territory. So we have citizens here that are not going to, that don't benefit at all from it, that pay into it. And that's why I think some of that happened in the past.
That's what I was kind of wondering, if some of the larger townships were, I mean, I don't know how
It changed the legislation.
Will that change Ron as they grow, as Campbell continues to grow?
No, it won't change unless, well, that's up to Campbell, what they want to do. They're going to have to try, you know, you become a fire territory or something, merge with someone else to do that, the township, that's up to them to where they can get some of that money, but it's, that's, but that's, it exists, that's the way it is. The other townships have fire territory or fire protection, or they have a city or town and so forth incorporated, but Campbell Township doesn't.
I think under Councilman Richmond, when you were president, you started out with the, you know, the allocation that you all chose in the county, and you were basing it off a population of eligible areas to be something that was fair and equitable because the demographics are going to change. And as that growth happens in one direction or another, it would justify it. And I guess by what the state did with this statute, that same would be the case for as your assessed value is going to grow or change. So it's given a fair and equitable way to do that, to help other areas that are going to experience growth. Because this is not going to just end with us in Ohio Township.
If the state doesn't like it, then they'll do legislation and change it.
Yeah.
They do that quite often.
So what's the, what's the starting rate for a new firefighter hire?
I've got it right here, I think that's right. 61,000.
Crystal, do you know by chance what that compares to the deputies? Like, just looking at different agencies and stuff?
I did not bring the salary ordinance with me, but I think they're starting at 58?
54,613.
Say it again.
54,613.
Okay, there you go.
54,000, thank you very much.
You know, I think Ron makes really good points, and, pretty obvious to all of us, but if income goes down and the PSLI goes down, since based on a percentage, your amount would go down regardless. It could, in theory, go to zero. I hope our county always makes money.
If it went to zero, we got big problems.
But mathematically, it could go to zero. And so I think that's a valid point and one that you should be well aware of. I know you are.
And we always spend in arrears, so that way we're not caught by something like that happening. So this is our request for the following, the following year.
Chad, your income has steadily increased every year or two, right?
For the
On the lit monies coming in.
Right, when we, well, just to put it in perspective, when the lit committee, which I was on and several of you were, the number was $10 million. That's what we were basing it off of, and when you all implemented it, it was $12 million. And here we are today at 15. So in less than five years, it's gone up $5 million in income. The rate hasn't changed, it's all about people moving and contributing to that, so. And then, there again, when you all did this, one of those reasoning behind it was, it's going after people who are earning income and people who are not earning income are not being affected or hurt by it. When you get into your retirement age, or if you lose your job or get unemployed, you don't face the effects of that. So I feel like at some point, you know, everything has to plateau off, but we'll be able to see that flatlining happening and be able to obviously be in a good financial picture with you all and your things, so.
I would like to clarify a number. That 15 million plus change is, that includes City of Boonville, Town Chandler, Town Elverfeld, Town Linville, Town Newburgh, Town Tennesse. When you subtract all the towns out in the city, that number goes down to 10,612,000. So just be aware, that's all we get to play with here.
Right, yeah, we are.
And our budget next year is estimated to be near $9 million.
And Crystal, do you know what the payment will be on the jail next year?
Um, you can bring it with me?
Yes, what's it about, are you?
I want to say it was like 1.7.
Okay, so 1.7, and at the end, it's the maximum is supposed to be like 4.1?
4.1 or something like that.
So we're running about 2 million below?
Just this next year, yeah. So you can see where we're very close.
Yeah, we'd be safe for a year, but might not be safe.
Well, for two years, because what I've got off your bond thing, you don't, the first two years, you're making interest-only payments, so it's 1,274,000 the first year and 2,376,000. And then in 2027, it bumps to the 4.1 million.
And that is not the amortization schedule I received, just so you know. But hey, I haven't researched it, so.
Going off of yours, one point, we're about 2 million, rough numbers.
And I received that during our conversation, so I haven't seen a final amortization schedule, so.
Does anyone else have any questions for the gentleman from Ohio Township, or is this?
Thank you all for your time, thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
The other townships?
I didn't have anyone on the sign-in sheet, so.
In case Brad, I'd like to make a motion.
We have to close, we close.
It's just a hearing. I thought that was, it has votes and nays and abstentions and
There's a motion to close, there's a motion on the floor to close the public hearing by Rick. There's a second by Greg, all those in favor?
Hi.
Great to do roll call.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
We got this guy on the phone.
Ron Bacon?
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt?
Wake up, Rob.
He's saying. Ted Metzger?
Hi.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Hi.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
You need to make a motion to open the, okay. All right, then, were you preparing to make a motion? Go ahead.
Then I'd like to make a motion to
We're jumping?
We're jumping?
Oh, sorry.
We're going to
I'm sorry, I thought I was just trying to, I was trying to get one
I called in voting, it's on there. Seconds, yays, yays.
That was to close, it's, I think it's item 8A or something like that.
We'll pencil you in now, that you have a motion.
Okay, pencil me in. The first item on tonight's agenda would be approval of minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion on the floor by Greg.
I'll second.
And a second by Ron. A roll call vote, please.
Ron Bacon?
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt?
Be a delay there, huh? No. Give me no.
It's to approve the minutes.
Also, it's proven that.
Okay, he's a yes. Ted Metzger?
Hi.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Hi.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is 7-0 to approve the minutes. Next item on the agenda is item 2A, additional appropriation. Edit construction, local paving projects, $500,000. And bridge, item 200, $350,000. You must have been stealthfully hiding back there because I was getting ready to say, has anyone even seen this gentleman?
Yeah. I came in a little late.
So that's what it was, and what's your name, sir?
Bobby Howard, Ward County Engineer. This is a request for the additional from the supplemental edit distribution to have a phase two paving list and continue our bridge 200 project that I brought up at budget time.
Bridge 200 is the
Lincoln Trail.
Lincoln Trail Bridge, yeah.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Rick to approve, is there a second? And a second by Ted to approve. Go ahead and open that up, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Ron Bacon?
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Yes.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Hi.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. I think I'm still up.
Looks like you have another item on the agenda, sign technician, add two positions at $1 more than truck driver, remove two truck drivers.
Yeah, basically, we had a sign tech, job description, and then it was kind of overlooked, I guess, during the process of the job study, and the sign techs were getting paid the same as truck drivers. The sign techs basically do more than the truck drivers, and that we had the new, they got old job description I sent in to Crystal, so I'm just asking that we amend that to make our sign tech a new classification, I guess, and remove two of the truck drivers so that these guys are actually taken care of for what they do. I have two sign techs.
And if I, if I remember correctly, they do, they basically do the paperwork for all of the other truck drivers.
They do all the paperwork, they call in all the, they call in all the locates for the signs, they do all the driving of the posts, and they keep an inventory of everything, so. Truck drivers don't
Don't do that.
Don't have to do any of that.
Motion approved.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to approve by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second on the floor by Ron. And Bobby, so was this just something that wasn't submitted during the initial job study? Is that what happened?
We looked at it, and these, the employees at the time, I think, were truck drivers, and there was some people retiring from sign tech, so I think it just got lost in the shuffle.
Okay, so this isn't something that's necessarily circumventing our job classification process, this is just something that we needed to tweak from the, I think, the initial
Yes.
consultation is what it sounds like to me, okay?
Yeah, and employees just kind of brought it to my attention that they were going to bid for truck driver.
I'm surprised they didn't bring that to your attention before now, but
No, it took a little bit.
All right, so there's a motion to approve on the floor. Is there any other discussion? If not, then we'll get a roll call vote, please.
Ron Bacon?
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt? Ted Metzger?
Hi.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Hi.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
All right, motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good day. Now we'll catch you as you leave, you weren't able to sneak, you're not going to be able to sneak out like you stuck in. All right, next item on the agenda is item number three, additional appropriation. That would be Building Department Motorized Vehicle of $22,905.
Dennis Lockhart, Ward County Building Commissioner. I'd like to request a transfer of $22,905 out of the Building Department Fund into the Motorized Equipment Fund as to purchase a 2024 Chevy Colorado. I'll be trading in a 2019 Dodge Ram. It's got a little over 80,000 miles on it, and right now I can get some money out of it if I trade it in because it gets any more mileage in, I'll tell you, pretty much, you can't get anything out of trade in. So that's what I'm requesting, this is for the second pickup for our department, and it's for my assistant. He's, puts a lot of miles on a truck.
So this is, this says an additional appropriation, but then you're saying it's a transfer?
Well, what he's saying is, it's, the Building Department is fees.
I got you.
So from, from with his own, within his own fees, he wants to appropriate it.
Yeah, and if I can do this, I'm taking 58,000 out of my budget for next year because I had 58,000 in for a truck for next year, so.
I understand, okay.
That's good.
Motion approved, second.
All right, motion on the floor to approve by Greg and a second by Rick. All right, motion on the floor to approve by Greg and a second by Rick. All right. All right, and we'll do that roll call vote again.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt.
No.
Ted Metzger.
Hi.
Brad Overton.
No.
Richard Reed.
Hi.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
All right, motion carries five to two. And the two nays were Brad Overton and Rob Dimmitt.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You're doing a great job.
All right, the next item on the agenda is number four, ordinance approving the county recorder perpetuation expense for 2025. Do I have to actually read that?
The title.
All right. And I will say that my, thank you, because my thing looks like my son's room. Ordinance number 2025, is that a dash zero four, Greg? Or is that just? Uh, one, okay. An ordinance of the county council of Warwick County, Indiana, approving the county recorder's office expenses for the 2025 fiscal year. All right. Thank you. Quite glad you did. I'm just all over the place. All right. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ron. And is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Rick. All right, and then that roll call vote, please.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Hi.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Hi.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. All right, next item on the agenda, health department business salary ordinance, emergency preparedness coordinator, $25 an hour.
Good evening, Debbie Bennett Steersman. The health department receives a grant every year in the amount of $25,000. And that grant is solely to hire an emergency preparedness coordinator. You should have on your desk something that says deliverables. And that grant deliverables, kind of scribbled on it. And that is just to tell you what has to be done in the grant by this person. And it also gives some deadlines, which some of them are coming up pretty quickly, just to give you an idea of the position of that person. And we also have a tentative job description. I didn't pass that out yet, because it really hasn't been fully approved by the health board. But, hold on a minute, the position that the health board would like to hire is a part-time position. And the rate they would like to use is $25 an hour. I did an analysis on another sheet. That shows the position at 27 hours a week, and there's three different alternatives there. You know, they're hoping for the 25, but if there were another, and then the three from above, I put down below, number one, two, and three, to tell you how we would pay for that particular person.
Marlon, did you have anything to add? You were.
Yeah, Marlon Wise, Warwick County Health Department Administrator. I mean, it's a very important job. This person primarily be working for the health department, but assigned to emergency management. And, you know, we hope to hire a retired, maybe police officer, firefighter, or EMT worker, because it needs to be NIM certified, you know, national incident management. And most guys all pretty well have that training. And that's just part of the criteria of this job. And, you know, we're blessed here in Warwick County to have such a great police department, fire department, all of our emergency services, emergency management, ambulance service, and dispatch. I mean, we're first class there. And this just adds another little criteria. We've got a grant that's available here to put this person in. And he'll be working mainly with Matt and emergency management through the health department. So he'll have that added coverage in connection there.
This is the fourth grant that the county has received that I'm aware of, fourth year. And unfortunately, the years one through three was, we had to pay those back, because we didn't have a position.
Didn't use it, yeah.
So I have a question, if that's okay with you guys, because I'm looking at your paperwork here, Debbie.
Okay.
So you're saying the grant is for 25,000?
It is.
Okay, so if you're saying it's for 25,000, according to your items at the top, one, two, and three, if you truly want to work the person 27 hours a week, then you would have to go $15 an hour. Are, if you're gonna go 25 hours, or $25 an hour, are you planning to shorten those hours for the individual?
I don't think so. Weren't you still thinking of 27 hours?
Well, that's what I was thinking. It'd be around 35,000 a year, wouldn't it?
She's just wanting to know with the hours.
Granted, only for 25,000.
I'd rather shorten the hours than the pay, because we need to get somebody, you know, at the $25 an hour rate to get a qualified individual to take this job. I mean, if we only got the 25,000, we can't find any other money to put with it. I think we could probably arrange that, but we could work, 27 hours is part-time position. You know, we want to keep it a part-time position, so we don't have to pay benefits. And looking for somebody that's retarded, wants to work 27 hours a week is what our goal was. Three and a half days or whatever. But we could cut the hours if we needed to. We just need to get this person hired and working with Matt.
How does that come, can I, okay, how, how does that compare to, doesn't EMA have a coordinator, some part-time coordinator? Matt did a little talking around and stuff, and, and, I don't know, oh, there you go, Matt would know.
Yeah.
Matthew Gayle, EMA director.
And you have a, a part-time assistant?
So I have a full-time deputy director, and I have a part-time operations officer for EMA.
And their hourly rates are?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, mine, uh, his. Oh, part-time is 2175. And he, he only works 20 hours a week.
Was that difficult to fill that position at 2175?
To be honest, it is, for what the operations officer does, perfect example for what just happened on tornado. Having someone qualified enough to do the job, that knows the job, with the training that Mr. Wise side is talking about. Yeah, it's, it would be kind of hard to fill that, to be honest.
That's more than I thought. For some reason, I thought it was like 1850 an hour or something, but I'm probably wrong, obviously.
But also, I mean, through EMA, this is, besides, you know, from the health department from EMA, we get a, a grant salary as well. And that's what helps us as well, bringing that back to the county.
I don't think any of us would exceed the grant amount, do we? I mean.
No. Okay. So you could shorten the hours to match the 25?
Yes. I mean, I, I think the main thing, now, if you would approve the $25 an hour, then we could adjust the schedule to the 25,000 for the hours worked.
That would not necessarily be good, because we're not paying anyone else $25 an hour.
Yeah, but we're not requiring them to have the NIM certification.
I understand that, but.
It'd be a shame if we pass this grant up and we don't get a qualified person to fill it. We're just trying to get the right person in there to provide the service that's needed.
Is it something that we could approve at a lesser hourly rate? Is that within our?
You just, yes.
Yeah, it is, I hope, yeah.
Well, at the $15 an hour, it's 21,000. If you go to 18, it's 25.
What if, what if we match the EMA assistant at 2175? Then what do we get in hours?
Well, you're gonna have, they'd have to reduce the hours.
Yeah.
Have to have a couple.
Any additional discussion or comments? If not, then I'll entertain a motion. What if we, what if we made a motion to approve it at $20 an hour? Can I do that?
You can.
You can. I mean, you always come back, right? If you can't find somebody.
Can we approve the 25,000 on second the grant? I mean, that would be.
No, they have to approve the salary ordinance.
Do we have to approve the 25,000, though, or just the salary ordinance?
Just, well, eventually, you have to approve, you would have to appropriate that money once it comes in.
About the 2175, same as the EMA assistant. Kind of keep it in line there a little bit.
So your motion is?
Motion to approve the, the grant and the EMA assistant at $21.75 an hour. No, and let me just ask, not to exceed the grant amount. Not to exceed the grant amount of 25, yeah. I'm just trying to find mill around here.
I'll second that.
All right, I'm sorry. We've got a motion on the floor by Chris and a second by Greg. I apologize if I was. And we'll take a roll call vote.
Uh, Ron Bacon.
No.
Rob Dimmitt.
No.
Ted Metzger.
Nay.
Brad Overton.
Nay.
Richard Reed.
No.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion fails, 2-5. Those opposed were Brad Overton, Rick Reed, Ted Metzger, Ron Bacon, and Rob Dimmitt.
I'll have, make a motion to do it at the $18 an hour. That will cover the cost of the grant, 25,000.
We've got a motion on the floor by Ron to make it at $18 an hour, not to exceed the cost of the grant. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Chris. All right, roll call vote, please.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Rob Dimmitt.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Hi.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Hi.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is item number six, resolution, advanced payments for goods and services.
Sherri Severs, acquisition administrator, Warwick County. Pursuant to IC Code 36-1-12-4.9, Parker's Custom Iron Works has been contracted by Warwick County Commissioners to build and install four aluminum doors to cover the crawl spaces in that access the exterior stairway of this building, the old courthouse. The total cost of this job is $4,475. Parker's is a small company and needs an advanced payment of 50% to allow them to purchase the materials needed for this public works project. On July 1st, 2023, the Senate passed bill number 317 that amended IC 511101.6 to allow for advanced payments on goods and services. And according to Indiana Code 511101.6, all advanced payments for goods or services must comply with the following guidelines. Number one, the county council must authorize making the advanced payment. Number two, payments must be tracked by defining the prepayment on a purchase order. Number three, a prepayment invoice must be created and associated with that purchase order. An insurance or surty bond in the amount of the prepayment is required if the payment exceeds 150,000. And the advanced payment cannot exceed 50% of the entire cost or $2 million. I prepared a packet for each one of you council members, Crystal, the attorney, Cliff Whitehead. And the pack, the packets include the completed prescribed SB, SBOA Form 98P, which is a prepayment purchase order, accounts payable voucher approved by Heather Solberg, Parker's Custom Iron Works invoice, and a sketch of the actual doors. Advanced purchase order information provided at the 2023 Fall Auditors Conference of the SBOA and a draft of the Commissioners Meeting notes of the regular session from July 8th that shows that the Commissioners did approve this transaction. I, I've also discussed this required procedure with the fiscal offer, Officer Mike Deech, and provided him with a copy of the advanced purchase order detailing the procedures as explained at the 2023 Fall Auditors Conference for the Indiana State Board of Accounts. I've also done research, and I've discovered that certain counties and municipalities actually enact an ordinance or a resolution that adopts the Public Law 181, which modifies Indiana Code 511101.6. The, and it actually amends and allows political subdivisions to make advanced payments to contractors for purchasing, purchasing materials for public works and advanced payments for goods and services with authorization of the fiscal bodies. This process, process helps avoid the need to come each time individually before the fiscal body. Today, I'm asking the council to approve the prepayment purchase order, general form number 98P that is required by the State Board of Accounts. I'm also seeking authorization for an advanced payment of $2,237.50 to Parker's Custom Iron Works Incorporated for the purchase of the materials for the aluminum crawl space doors for the historic courthouse, as previously approved by the Warwick County Commissioners.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
If we pass this, this isn't an open ticket to skip the council now, from now on forward, is it?
I have to, right.
This is just for this isolated incident.
That's an option she was talking about.
Exactly.
Right, if, if you, I guess, and please correct me, if you enact an ordinance or a resolution, that would skip you. And, and that's totally, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that's totally up to what you all decide you want to do. Very seldom do, do we have someone asking for a prepayment. Since I've been here, we did do a prepayment for, we prepaid for materials, but we had to have receipt of delivery. So they actually had to have the materials on our job site when we did the courthouse flooring renovation. And we cut them a check for the, for the actual materials. I've never had anybody ask me for a prepayment so they could purchase, but I understand why, because they're, they're a small company.
And where are these doors located?
They're going to go underneath each one of these, all of your
Stairwells.
Stairways outside have a crawl space. Currently, there's cardboard and there's wood that covers those crawl spaces. Underneath the, the, behind in those crawl spaces, that's nothing but dirt. Okay, so out of the dirt, we get more radon.
That's right.
So if we can get these doors made, and we're having a seal put over that, and then those will be bolted in, that will keep radon from coming into the courthouse. And, and that basically is one of the purposes for this project.
And Cliff, just so everybody else heard what you said as well, this is just for this one isolated incident.
That is correct.
Okay. And Sherri, you have no other place to transfer funds from, for this, other than asking for an additional?
We, we have the money. It's not asking for an additional appropriation. We already have the money. I just have to have permission to do a prepayment.
Okay.
Yes, we're not asking for it, yeah.
Sometimes you have to get the crayons out for it.
That, that's okay. That's okay, Mr. Overton.
This is the first time we're doing this, too. So that's also goes to why maybe there's a lot of questions, which is fine.
Thanks for, you know, covering for me there and doing that. I appreciate it. Anybody?
Did, did we get a recommendation to do this from somebody to cut down on the radon?
We didn't have a recommendation. The Commissioners asked me. We didn't have a recommendation, the Commissioners asked me to get some type of covering down there, because we have star foam, and what was happening is out of that just earth, it draws moisture. And when it draws moisture, it also draws mold. And over a period of time, you're, whether it's star foam, they weren't all matching, some had star foam, some have wood. That wood draws moisture, and then you've got mold that comes through there. They want a permanent solution so that we don't have mold coming through, and that it would, if there is radon coming out of there, because through all the studies that they've done, there is studies that show that radon comes out of just the earth if you don't have a covering over, and you've got nothing but dirt floors under those areas. So that, it's actually keeping moisture out, and it's actually, hopefully, will keep any radon, if radon is coming through those areas.
Hopefully. So we have no professional recommendation that this will solve the problem?
There are aluminum doors with a seal, so moisture's not going to come through that.
Was it moisture or radon that you're worried about?
Well, I don't know that it's either or, I just know I was asked to get bids, because what's there now is, it's not working. And if we just continue to put plywood up, we're going to continue to have moisture issues and black mold form on that.
Sealing it up seems like it would add to the problem. When I've dealt with radon in the past, the answer was ventilation.
Well, they're addressing that too.
Yeah.
You know, with the professionals.
Possibly make the problem worse by sealing it up.
I don't know, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah. We need to study on that before we.
I mean, in just my opinion, even if there is no concern about the radon, it probably is a good idea to at least have more weather resistant structures on the house. I mean, I think it kind of reminds me of when you'll drive around and see folks that have the weird looking plastic things on the bottom of their house, and other people have a nice something that looks a little more presentable. And not that presentation is everything, but I mean, I think, that's my thought, so even if it doesn't do anything for the radon issue, maybe that's just a added bonus, or maybe it does cause some increase, but probably one way or the other, my thought would be we'd need to at least have something. It's better than a hollow frame door compared to a solid door, I guess, is my.
Right. Just to be clear, even if the council denies this, the Commissioners can still do it.
Yeah, they just have to wait until they, yeah, so, yeah, so either way.
And if you go back to the Indiana Code, if there was an RFP put out for this, and we stated in the RFP that we would allow for prepayment, we have that option. We can do one or the other, according to Indiana Code. We didn't do an RFP that stated that, so our next option is to come before council for approval of that.
So basically, you wouldn't even be here tonight if it wasn't for this, because you could have just made an inline transfer to pay for the funds. So if it wasn't for the request for prepayment.
Prepayment.
Exactly.
Not to put words in your mouth, but.
Right, exactly. But we want to do what's required by Indiana Code, of course.
All right. Any other additional discussion?
You have to read the title of the resolution.
Oh. Thanks, Greg, I'm glad you're here to assist me, because I look like a mess. Wart County Council Resolution Number 2024-02. All right.
Resolution is nine.
Nine?
Nine?
I thought the last one was one.
Ordinance was one.
Ordinance.
That was an ordinance.
All right, thank you, Greg, for assisting with.
Takes a village.
I try, it does, we all, we're all going to join hands in a moment as well. So looking for a motion.
So move.
Somebody say speak for themselves, I mean, come on, guys.
I'll second.
A motion on the floor by Greg and a second by Ron. And we'll do that, everybody's favorite, roll call vote.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
No.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
All right, motion carries five, one with one abstention, the nay was Rick Reed, and the abstention was Ted Metzger.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, next item on the agenda, we've got some handbook policy reimbursements, transfers, or corrections. All items listed below have been checked for accuracy and can be voted under one motion. All right, I'm going to read through these. Item 7A is additional appropriation fireworks, $2,500. Sheriff business reimbursement, 7B, additional appropriation, $7,275. Stormwater business transfer from computer software, $3,000, to legal services, $3,000. Commissioner business correction, additional and reductions, admin clerk animal control, $38,944, to admin clerk animal control, $38,944, and then a reduction of $38,944. Okay, so I've read through those, and I might just have a couple clarifications. The fireworks, that's just their appropriation to.
It's a reimbursement, that is their gate collection.
Yeah, that's their gate collection fee to pay for the fireworks.
So do they collect enough money for the $2,500s?
Yeah, so, well, that's what they've collected, and that's, we just have to appropriate it.
Yes.
Correct.
That is correct.
I don't mean to speak out of turn. And then, could I just get a little info on the animal control thing?
Sure.
Can we just kind of explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So, of course, you are all aware that the Commissioners did take over animal control, and at the time, we transferred all employees from the Health Department to the Commissioners' budget, but there was one employee that was left in public health, and we're just wanting to get that employee also transferred to the Commissioners' budget.
Okay, thanks. All right, does anybody else have any questions about any of those items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Ron.
Check him.
And a second by Greg. All right, Crystal?
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
No.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
All right, motion carries six to one with one nay, and that nay is from Rick Reed.
Do we want to do the Commissioners' extra one?
It's coming, I'm going to talk about that at the very end of the meeting.
After the resolution.
Yes.
All right, next item under Council Business is 8A Resolution for Meeting Procedures. I believe everybody received an outline of some meeting procedures, and then I, that Cliff had drafted from some recommendations that Greg had presented, and I don't, we can go ahead and open that up for discussion now, if we'd like to discuss any of those Or we could make a motion to pass the procedures.
Need to read it now first.
You can read the title if you'd like.
I guess one's ten, right? Wart County Council Resolution Number 2024-10. All right, anybody got any comments?
Do we need a motion first?
Do we can make a motion and then still have comments, sure? Are you making a, or, was that a motion, or was that just a question?
Just a question.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor by Greg.
Second.
And a second on the floor by Ron.
What's the motion?
The motion, oh, yeah, good question. Is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Wart County Council Resolution 2024-10.
All right.
Procedures. And just, it's a resolution, the County Council of Wart County, Indiana, establishing policies and procedures to protect decorum and foster the effective administration of public meetings.
So now discussions?
Yep.
Feel free. So why do we need this? Would that, that's my first question, why do we even need this?
It just helps to have rules and regulations that, this is something at the AIC group, when I did the County Council meeting that I went to, that I tried to get you all to go to. They, most of them have this in place, especially the larger counties, and we're kind of in the larger counties, especially in southern Indiana. And this just keeps people from coming up and saying, okay, I can talk all I want to talk, because you don't have any rules.
And I think to Greg's point, it is very common for governing bodies to have these rules and procedures. And so it also is so that they cannot be accused of favoritism of letting one speaker go on for 10 minutes, or one topic go on for longer, and then all of a sudden arbitrarily say, on this topic, we're only going to limit it to three minutes. So having a rules procedures that the council as a body can point to and say, no, we're following our rules, takes away that argument that they're being arbitrary, capricious, and enforcing any type of decorum. So I do, as your attorney, I do believe you should adopt some type of policies and procedures for public speaking at these meetings, you know, whether you want to follow these exact to a T, that's up to you, but I do think this is a good idea, and I think Greg was right in raising it.
So doesn't the president already have that power to limit the conversation and the speech, and tell somebody when they're redundant?
He does, but it gets back to what I was saying, then all of a sudden, that puts it on the president to arbitrarily say, for this topic, I'm going to limit it, for this speaker, I'm going to limit it, and then that, there could be an argument of favoritism, that, oh, for this topic or this person, you're limiting it, but not for that topic or that person.
When I was president, we had the public, the safety, public safety tax.
Mm-hmm.
There's a long meeting. Times when we needed, and I tried to gavel some people down, and they didn't want to sit down, so. Well, that's why the sheriff's here. Right? I mean, we're kind of infringing on the freedom, our First Amendment right. Not really, this allows anybody to speak that wants to speak. Right, well, like, when the meeting opened and Chad and the chief was speaking to us, that would limit, would have limited them to three minutes only?
No.
To give that presentation? No.
No.
Well, that's what it says. Well, that was an agenda item that is their business brought before us. It's like any officer coming before us, they're not limited. This is the general public that comes in.
That was a public hearing where they got to speak on their applications, that was on the agenda. This is for members of the general public.
So it only limits the public?
And I can just go on?
I just don't think we need it, we don't have that much of a problem. Every once in a while, when we do raise taxes or something, people want to speak.
And that's okay.
You know, it's our First Amendment right, and we're public servants, you know, we're here to be good stewards of the people's money, and we're elected officials, and it's our duty to listen to people, even if they are redundant. I mean, if somebody gets out of line and won't sit down, then I can see the sheriff moving them, but I just hate to put any restrictions on our First Amendment rights, that's all.
Well, the only thing, the one thing that I would say is if there were 100 people lined up in support of whatever it might be.
Right.
For me to take this tea bottle off of the table, and all 100 people came up and told me the exact same thing, and I knew in advance that all 100 people were going to say the same thing, I think that's, I mean, there's some redundancy there that the meeting has gone on, and I think if everybody would just raise their hand and say, yes, we all agree that I should remove the tea bottle from the front of the meeting, then I would remove the tea bottle, or whatever it might be. I mean, I think we have to have some structure. I mean, if I sat up there and started yelling fire, or, you know, whatever, or anybody else did, I mean, I think you've got to, you have to have some kind of parameters. I mean, we can't, I mean, I understand there is freedom of speech, but, you know, it is also within a certain framework that we have to operate under as well.
But as the president of the council, you also have the authority to look at this sheet beforehand and see that there's 100 people that want to speak, and establish a limit at that time of three minutes. I mean, if there's only three people that want to speak, why should we limit them to three minutes, when, you know, you're limiting 100 people to three minutes, it just, it doesn't make sense. And that's the only part of the resolution I disagree with. A lot of it is sensible and educational, but the limiting people to three minutes, I'm having trouble with. I mean, they're taxpayers, we're elected officials, we owe it to them to listen to their concerns.
So to that, I would ask, if a person wanted to stand up there and read the phone book to us for four hours?
That's not relevant.
That's irrelevant, and the president could say that they're out of line, and if they don't want to leave, the sheriff's here to remove them. I mean, that's what he comes here every meeting for, his little action, something to do. We don't have anything written down that says the sheriff can do that. Well, that's why he's here now, isn't it? I was in a meeting the other day, Commissioners' meeting, where the talk just kept going and going and going and going and going, and was asked to sit down, and it was a health meeting, same thing. So if the president of the council asks the sheriff to remove somebody for being out of order, he can't do that? He can't do that. He can do that, yeah.
Ted, you are correct, yes. This, a sheriff still, without these, removes somebody who is being disorderly.
Yes.
But it does protect this body of, again, being accused of being arbitrary, capricious in their rules of decorum.
Have we been accused of that in the past? We're just doing something.
I don't know that I, I mean, I've been accused of some things, and I, we probably don't want to, we probably don't want to get into that discussion up here, as to what I've been accused of doing, so.
I mean, if it enforced our constitutional rights, I'd be for it, but it kind of restricts them, it's more of a restriction than it is to bolster them. So that's probably why I'm going to let them know.
Does there, anybody have anything additional to add to that?
Just like you cut?
Nope. Well, I mean, you were continuing to say the same thing, so sorry.
You already have the power to do a lot of this. Well, could we do something with, the president has a decision to, if there's a lot of speakers, so we can limit it at that point.
I think you could make your motion to.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's already a motion on the floor, sorry, it's been a while.
And a question's been called.
Question's been called for that motion. Right, right.
So we'll call for a roll call vote, then?
Ron Bacon?
I'm voting aye, and I want to say the reason why, definitely because our attorney looked into this and that, and I thought so, because I've been in many meetings, many years, and that was our decorum always, to have limited time for the public to speak. But also, this body has been accused by the public of doing things illegally right here in front of us, and we've done nothing about it. And I think this will help us to do that. And I'm saying that so sincerely, we've been accused of doing illegal things from the public sitting right there at that podium. So this would help us in that respect. Vote aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Nay.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
No.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Before I vote, I have a comment, which is, when I first came around, I was really surprised we didn't already have, the council didn't have this. So, yes, aye.
Motion carries five to two. And the two opposed were Ted Metzger and Rick Reed.
And Crystal, the resolution calls for it to be posted on the website, so we work with Heather and.
Yes.
Christine.
Five to ten.
Can you take care of that? Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is 8B, Resolution to Allocate a Portion of the PSLIT to Qualifying Service Providers. And I think we've already defined who those qualifying service providers are earlier, but I'll go ahead and read those, a fire department, volunteer fire department, and emergency medical services provider, a township fire department, a fire protection territory, a fire protection district.
Is this when I get to make my motion?
You can make your.
I've been waiting on that.
I know.
I get a comment here first, but, because I was going to make a motion at the original PSLIT request, those 15%, however, Ron Bacon, Councilman Bacon, certainly makes some very good points, and my motion is to approve the allocation at 10% of the amount received. However, I worded that. However, I word that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to make the allocation, uh, allocate the, the lit allocation portion to be at 10%. Is there a second?
For Ohio Township.
Yep, for the...
For the, for everyone. Yes, we can't split it, we can't split it up. There's a motion on the floor by Chris and a second by Rick at the 10%. And I'll go ahead and open up the floor for additional discussion at this time.
If we do that...
I don't have the numbers, so don't ask me the numbers.
Nine, nine million is basically what we have in the budget for public safety. Already committed, basically. So that leaves us with $1,612,109, and then that would leave nothing left if there's some kind of emergency or something.
It actually would not, Greg. The point 08 leaves the county with 10.3. So if you, if you take that up to 10, um, it would be a little less than a million. I don't have, I haven't calculated the numbers. That you would have leftover for county portion.
If we went at point 08?
No, if you went to the 10.
Went to 10?
Mm-hmm.
It would be how much for the county, did you say, roughly?
Close to a million, between 800,000 and a million, probably.
Should be about 300,000 difference, right?
Yeah.
Now, that million you're talking about would be the balance that's left after we award the 10%.
Correct.
Okay. I was under a different impression. Sorry.
Crystal, historically, we've always done numbers.
I know.
Right? And not percentages.
And not percentages.
Practically, is, is that cause an issue, if we do percentages versus numbers?
I mean, I'd rather have numbers, but I can calculate.
Okay.
We don't.
We get this much money, but our budget isn't as much.
Okay.
So if it's 10, 10, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be less than that, so it's closer to.
So if we put a 10 over that? Okay, now I understand. The last column out here is the 25 estimate at point 08. And that's 10 million.
Crystal, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Would, would you please, uh, repeat the, the, uh, motion again, please, so I can understand that better?
So that is over.
You guys want me to do that?
Are you getting my phone?
I, I can hear you better than I can the others. I'm, I'm on time delay, so I...
Okay.
So I can hear correctly.
I'm gonna put you in the middle of the room, okay?
So the motion was to approve the PSLIT distribution at 10% of the maximum allocated amount.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, so, uh, the items has been, um, so I think, believe we're open for a discussion. I think we got somewhat, say.
Now, to Greg's question about what's left over, uh, with the year, isn't there, is that about a million left? Is that what we came up with? About 300,000 less than?
Yes, approximate, a little less than a million.
And then wasn't there an additional allocation that came to the county sometime during the year?
Yes, but the, the total allocation that was quoted, some of that money went to edit road funds, some of that money went to economic development side, and some of that money went to the public safety LIT side. And that is within the cash balance, and it is being used to calculate.
But that did make it go over the, the million or whatever that was left last year?
Correct.
Okay, and it would make, if that happens again, it would go over again, is that right?
Correct, correct.
So if, if we did the eight hundreds, we, what, that's not his motion, but I have a question. If we did the eight hundreds, would we still be over what we're gonna have?
This is why I keep thinking you're not looking at. This is how much we, we would get, just us in the yellow. This is our budget. Where did I write it down? I didn't write it on yours. This is our budget.
9085614.
This is how much we would get. This is our budget.
Okay.
And in, in your budget that you're, you're showing Greg there, is that with a payment, a jail bond payment of?
Not the high amount. It's like one, I told you I didn't bring it with me. 1.2, I don't, I, I haven't looked at it in a few days, so.
That's the... And we're, that's 8%. If that were given, that'd be.
All right, is there any additional discussion? I'll have a roll call vote.
Ron Bacon?
No.
Rob Demmett?
No.
Ted Metzger?
Nay.
Brad Overton?
No.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
No.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
All right, that motion fails. Uh, those opposed were Ron Bacon, Greg Richmond, Brad Overton, uh, Ted Metzger, and Rob Demmett.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to use the numbers.
Okay.
Uh, at our 6% rate for Pigeon Township, $11,131. Ohio Township, $760,733. Skelton Township, $17,639. And Yankee Town, $25,663 for a total of $815,166.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Ron to approve the 6% based upon the numbers that he just read. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor by Ron and a second by Ted. All right, uh, we'll call for a vote.
This discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I wasn't trying to jump that. I just, sorry.
Guys, I, I, personally, I feel that's way too small for, uh, the fire departments. When, when they came in for an ask of 15% just a few years ago, um, there was roomful of people, a lot of debate, uh, council, um, approved it at 10%. And to, to whittle it down, keep whittling it down, when these are the folks who, uh, who come to our aid, and when they spoke, they asked who has called 911. And Ron, you raised your hand. Uh, I too have had that call. And, uh, when you have a child laying face down on an interstate highway, uh, every second counts, not every minute. And to short these guys, when our number one job as public officials is to provide public safety for our citizens, uh, that, that number is too low. I will oppose it for that reason. Well, in discussion, I'm, I'm feeling that we're looking at the numbers we've been able to do. We are increasing it from last year, and we do this every year. And, and I, I want to continue to increase it as we go, as long as I'm concerned, as long as I'm relatively sure that we're gonna continue to have the funding to do it. I don't want to have 20 firemen and then not have the funding and say, oh, now we can't afford 20 firemen. Or 25, or whatever number it is in the future. So I'm looking at, this year, we're moving it up, you know, we had 5%, now we're going to 6%, you know, we're still...
Not even raising it to cover inflation at that.
Sorry, but we rate, I mean...
But here we are taxing these folks, and, and 70% of them in Ohio Township.
All right.
That are paying the bill. And, uh, we're saying no to their public safety.
No, we're saying we're giving you an increase, your public safety. We're just not giving you all of the, what they're asking for. Not, we are giving an increase.
That doesn't even cover inflation.
Yeah, but there's also townships in this county that are getting nothing and paying into it. So, now I can't affect that, you know, at this time, so. They're paying into it every day, just like everyone else, and their response isn't getting changed at all.
I believe we heard that the town, that the fire department serves the entire county when they need it, so they are getting something.
I think there's no argument that we know the need is there. But when you've got a bag full of money and you have several commitments for that money, if we overspend it, we're gonna run into what Ron was talking about, and we're also gonna run into, that's my thinking. I, I committed to go the full 10% if we could afford it, but now I have the figures in front of me, and it, I'm scared to death to go overboard, because we got into a position once before in this county where we overspent. It wasn't caused by us. There were some catastrophic things that happened. We had to lay off a bunch of people, and that hurt. And then, you know, we've got commitments to the sheriff's department, we've got commitments to the new ambulance, we've got a staff at the new ambulance. There's some things going on that the public safety taxes has good use. We've got school officers in that we didn't have before, and I don't want to slight anybody anything, but when you've only got so much in the bag of money, you can't overspend it. That would not be a fiscal responsibility. And I'd like to see this go a little farther. I mean, we don't know. They were talking recession in all the business news yesterday. If things like that happen, we would go down instead of going up.
How much do we have in the PSLIT fund right now, roughly?
Uh, we have... Okay, so I've subtracted off what is left in the budget. So we have 7, 7,309,800.
So we have $7 million just hanging out there?
Yes.
And the money comes in every month?
That was the money, a lot of the money that was transferred back into the fund recently that we had set aside for the jail bond payment. Remember, we had to transfer that back, yeah.
So we got seven and a half million?
7.3. Mm-hmm.
So we could cover the ask for a couple of years and...
For a couple of years.
Yeah.
And we don't know down the road for sure.
Sure.
That's my, that's my...
Everybody's incomes could double.
And I think another thing to also bear in mind as well is the Victoria Woods, which is...
I don't know what that's...
Well, I know, but I mean, that's, that's another thing that's floating around there as well.
It's gonna happen.
At some point in time. Any additional discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote, and I don't know, we may have, I think Rob's back.
Is he back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
No.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
No.
All right, motion carries five to two. The noes are Chris Wetstein and Rick Reed.
He didn't read that resolution title.
I did.
You did?
Yes.
I'm sorry. What was the number? I missed that.
10.
2024, 10?
No.
No.
Oh, no, no, we, sorry.
11, okay.
11?
Yes.
All right, I don't see any additional, uh, council items. Uh, does any member of the council have anything?
Uh, there's still more to the agenda.
Oh, the, read the caps. Sorry, I was looking at that. Okay. So let me read those.
You just have to read those titles I listed on the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, so budget estimates to be read into the minutes, uh, 2023 Tax Cap, 2024 Library Maximum Budget Report, 2024 Miscellaneous Revenue Report, 2024 Estimate Maximum Levy, 2024 Maximum Mental Health, 2024 Estimate, Estimated Debt Service Payment and Levis, 2024 Estimated Cumulative Fund Max Rates. And those reports can all be found, uh, on the indiana.gov website for additional information. Okay, am I missing anything else?
No motion?
No, no motions needed for that. Um, I do have one transfer that was placed before you, and Heather had to step out, but it was a transfer in the King Cap Fund. Um, I sent it by email today. Let me look at her notes. They would prove an out-of-line transfer at tonight's meeting. We have two invoices for HVAC repairs at the courthouse totaling $16,588 and a balance of only $9,524. And so she's asking to transfer $7,033.82 from other contractual services to HVAC,
Motion approved. Motion on the floor by Greg to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
And there's a second by Ron. Call for a vote, please.
This will, uh, the budget line on, and we'll have nothing then. Is that correct?
She said budget at 40.
No.
Okay, I got it. I understand. I got HVAC at this building or at the JC building?
Um...
Do you know where that's located there?
At the courthouse.
Courthouse, yeah, that's it. Courthouse in this building. And how, those, those units aren't that old. It seemed like we're taking, getting taken to the cleaners on that.
I don't know. All I know is there was a leak. I could hear it up above my office, and I think it maybe drained down in that hallway, and that happened last week, so it's probably what it is.
It was on the walls.
Yeah, it was coming down the wall.
They had to take it somewhere.
Was that why the rug was up on the, the front steps?
Yes, yes.
Seemed like you would have gone back to the contractor, because it sounds like it's installed wrong.
Rick, I'm sorry, I can't, you know, I can't answer that.
Well, I don't think we should be voting on this, and this just came in too late. You know, you need to have a little bit of time to, to research that thing, too. I wouldn't mind seeing the bills, seeing if a repair needed to be done. I mean, we had a mess on those walls. I don't know if you saw those or not.
All right, I believe we've got a motion by Greg and a second by Ron. Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Nay.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
No.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
No.
Motion passes four to three. Those opposed are Chris Wetstein, Ted Metzger, and Rick Reed. Do you, council member, have anything additional? All right, looking for a motion?
We'll connect the sheet first.
Oh, sorry, I had a sheet up here.
I think they've already spoken.
Oh, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I mean, motion carries seven zero. Will that be normal maximum?
Yes.
See you, Rob.